Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of March 7th, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to start to resolve to approve the minutes of the business meeting of February 28th, 2019.
Taken.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd now like to announce that the treasurer's report for January 2019 is available in the business office. And as always, we seem to make a change to the agenda. We have been requested, and it's a reasonable request, to start with our student report. So Sonia Garcia, take it away.
Thank you. Okay, so first, there will be the TRIAM induction. The Honors Society for Music, known as TRIAM, will have their induction March 15th at 7:00 PM. TRIAM inductees had to have at least a 95 average grade in music and have a combined average of 80% in other academic subjects combined. They had to write an essay, including why you are interested in becoming a member of TRIAM, how music has affected you positively over your lifetime, and how you would like to continue to make music part of your life after high school. Also, the students applying had to upload a file of them singing or playing a solo equivalent to a Level 4 NISMA. The special students who have been accepted into the Honors Society are passionate about music and will hopefully continue being passionate past high school.
Sonia, I'm sorry, where is that going to be? Is that going to be in the classroom or is that going to be at?
I believe in the band room.
Band room.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. National Science Honors Society Science Fair. Senior students in National Science Honors Society helped elementary school students with their science fair projects. The Science Honors Society members helped elementary schoolers find a project to complete these last four Thursdays, including today. The members helped the students' projects become a reality. The science fair will take place March 13th at 6:30 PM in the elementary school. Cheerleading won Section 1 championships, which is their fourth year in a row, and they went to Rochester. They won second at states for our class.
Can we clap for that? That's four years in a row.
The one-act play. The one-act plays were performed February 14th. There were three plays performed, including Jacqueline Podote's, Bianca Garcia's, and Caitlin Carroll's play. Brian Carroll also was in third place with Caitlin Carroll, but sadly, there wasn't enough resources to perform both. Each play was unique and fascinating. I have heard nothing but good things come from it. Overall, it was a success. The Blue Path Dogs. March 5th, the Blue Path Dogs came to the high school. They are autism service dogs, but that is not all that they do. These dogs allowed students to relieve any stress they had, whether it be from school or their personal lives. I know personally, after petting and hanging out with them, I felt much more calm and stress-free. The History Club Field Trip. February 28th, History Club organized a field trip to Boston. They started in the Commons and eventually went to the Freedom Trail, where they had a guided tour. After walking around and eating lunch at the Oyster House, which is the oldest restaurant in America, they went back on the bus. They then drove to Salem to see the Salem Witch Trial Museum and its many attractions. The History Club members said it wasn't only educational, but also very fun.
In a long day.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. And now, you have a tough act to follow, Ms. Figueroa, because you're talking about the budget. That was much more fun.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to present the 2019-20 school district budget for Putnam Valley. And I'm going to start off with the student enrollment. So our student enrollment information to date, right now, as of right now, we have our actual showing for the current year. We have 1,642 students and 18 out-of-district students. And our expected enrollment in 2019-20 is at 1,607 and counting. So there's registration still going on. That'll be going on, obviously, through the summer. A little fact that you, and actually, it's pretty substantial if you see the note at the bottom. For last year, I just looked at that, and from May 1st of 2018, which is, you know, before we vote on the budget, but after all of the information is in the budget and adopted by the board, we had 111 new students enroll in the district, and we had 28 that left. So, pretty large number. The prior year, when I did this and we talked about it, we had 79 students come in and 69 left. So, not a big change from one year to the next. Don't know where that's going to end up, but I just thought that that was a significant piece of information to mention. And when we had our demographer do the study on the enrollment for the district, it came out very much like we think it's going to come out, like we planned it was going to come out, at 1,626, and the building presentation showed 1,625. So we'll see. And we'll keep updating that as we go.
And I think, you know, that trend for the new students will probably not be sustainable, not necessarily even financially. I don't think the community has enough real estate inventory for, you know, much more influx into the town.
It's, yeah, a lot of it is rental properties. The demographer's report does show that it does go down, though, if you take a look at that over time. So whether or not that becomes true or not, we'll see. The next area that we're going to look at before we do a look at the numbers is our program and staffing for 2019-20. We're going to be continuing our current programs. We're going to be possibly adding a ninth-grade level of Mandarin if the scheduling demand exists. So those schedules for the high school are still being put together. And just wanted to mention, this is a distance learning program. For those who don't know, offered through Orange Ulster Bosie's. So there's not a teacher on campus here. What we have are aides or assistants in those classrooms, and it's a distance learning program that's offered through another Bosie's. So here are our staff changes district-wide. What we're expecting, we have three teachers retiring. We have 13 support staff retiring. Most of these people are in the middle school. The reductions, as far as teachers go right now, I mean, and this is all preliminary, this is the first presentation of the budget, so that can change. But right now, we have 3.4 teachers, as far as reductions go, and three of the retiring bus drivers of the support staff are bus drivers. And it's uncertain at this time whether they would be coming back or we would be offering those routes to the contractor. We have a hard time, just as they do, hiring bus drivers, and whether or not we are able to fulfill that ourselves or offer it to them and have them fulfill it is yet to be seen, so we're discussing that with them. And then we have, as mentioned in the operations maintenance budget, was the addition of one groundskeeper custodian. That's one position. That's a groundskeeper slash custodian. That's the title. And they would be at the middle school, high school campus. And then the one clinician that would work between the elementary school and the middle school campus. So this is information about the revenue that we're expecting. I've made some assumptions, and those would be that we're seeing higher interest earnings on our investments. So they've improved. We also have one out-of-district tuition that we didn't have last year. We have our overall state aid increase only at $220,000. It's very low. We talked about foundation aid. I know Dr. Wells sent out a memo or a letter, and I think it was also shared with the public regarding foundation aid and how it's not being supplied to the districts as originally planned in the state budget. So we're seeing very low increases in state aid. Reduced reliance on the use of fund balance for 1819 budget. We used $2.2 million of general fund reserves, and we used $1.3 million of debt service reserves to close that gap in the revenue and be able to meet the expenditures. And in 1920 budget, you'll see that it's proposed to use $1.5 million of general fund reserves and $1 million of debt reserve. Trying to reduce the reliance on that. We don't want to run out of reserves. We just had a listening hour, and we also talked about it at that meeting, and how important it is to maintain those reserves. The debt service reserve only has a certain amount, and we can't build that up at all. So when the depletion of that reserve becomes, you know, reality, then we no longer can rely on that for our budget. So we slowly have to reduce our reliance on that every year when we prepare our budget, from now until it runs out, which I see five years, using about $300,000 less per year. That's my estimate right now. Okay, so here's our budgeted revenue by source. And so we have our state and federal sources. I have our budgeted state aid at $11 million. That's what they're predicting. We're seeing an increase there of about 2%. So last year, the reason I put it in blue there, last year, we budgeted $10.4 million. We're actually getting $10.7. So we did a little bit better than what we, you know, and it was because of building aid changes and because of transportation aid changes. So we got a little bit more than we had expected. And that was one of the reasons that we can use a little less of our reserves this year, because we're going to be able to have that leftover this year to put it towards the reserves for next year. So, towards the budget for next year. And then this year, we're going to see like an interest earnings here. This is local non-tax revenue. So this is where I made the assumption that we are going to get a little bit higher interest rates on our investments, and we have that tuition that I spoke about, the one out-of-district tuition. So we see an increase from $510,000 to $700,000. The real property tax revenue is our tax levy. Last year, $36.747, proposed at $37,480. That's a 1.99% increase. Our tax cap would allow us, with the calculation, to be at 2.08%, which is, I feel we don't need to go to that. We can stay with the 1.99 and still meet the needs by appropriating our reserves at 1.5 million versus the 2.2 last year, and appropriating our debt reserve at 1 million and against last year at 1.3. So there's a reduction there. Like I said, about $300,000 each year. I'd like to see us lower that reliance on the debt reserve so that we don't, so that we're able to last those five years that I'm predicting. So overall, the budget increase from 2018-19 to 2019-20 would be a .75% increase, or $385,000. It's under 1%. It's, in comparison to the tax levy, a lot different. So if anybody has any questions regarding those two numbers, I mean, they're, you know, they're not, they're related, but overall, the budget-to-budget is at .75. Okay, so here's some expenditure information before we go over them. So what changes does this budget include? It includes, there's going to be new labor contract for teachers, and that's underway now, the negotiations. The support staff contracts, the vendor contracts, the Bosie's program services and equipment contracts. We're going to see a 3.5% increase in health premiums, which equates to about $205,000 in addition to what we've been paying. Change in our transportation contractor. A new ninth-grade level of Mandarin, possibly, for next year, because we don't have a level of Mandarin at that grade level now, but we would be bringing that on if there was enough interest in it. And I think after the assessments are done, that's something that's going to be determined, whether we have that grade level or not. And then we have the staff replacements and enhancements that I talked about previously. The savings that I'm seeing in the budget are teacher-employer pension contribution rate going down 1.13%. That's the amount the district pays based on the salaries, teacher salaries that we pay to the state. And then an estimated saving, that would save us about $135,000. And then the teacher and staff retirements, the reductions, that was a savings of about $450,000.
Jill, are the reduction in the employer pension contribution tied directly to the, or partially to, the retirements as well? Or the retirement, is the retirement total of $450,000 include the less amount of, the amount that we are paying into the pensions because we now want to pay on those higher salaries?
No, the lesser amount of the pension that we're paying into is reflected in the $135,000 savings. The $450,000 savings reflects the difference between what we would have paid the teachers versus what we would pay the replacements.
Gotcha. So that 450s are all in for salary?
Salary only. So these are the budgeted expenditures by category. We have the general support, and I'll go, I'm going over these in more depth in the next slide. So this is the general support portion of the budget is up about $25,000. The instructional portion of the budget, which is the largest portion of the budget, is down $60,000, partially due to the retirements and other things. But transportation, we're seeing a little bit of an increase there. We have those extra, the extra increase in the contract for next year. And also, the benefits area is down $105,000, but that's because of the retirement savings. And the debt service, we're going, you're seeing an increase there because we are allowed to classify our IPAs. Our IPAs are installment purchase contracts for our laptop computers and for our Xerox copiers and printers. So the state is now allowing us to classify them in the debt service area of the budget, so they get removed from a portion of the budget that they were in before. So the laptops and the, would have been in the instructional budget, and the copiers and printers would have been in the general support budget. So you would have seen higher numbers in those areas if they were left where they were before. So that, oh, that's the note that I have at the bottom there. So that's, so that's for that. Okay, so here it is broken down further, and this compares the two. So we have the regular school programs. That's basically all of your instructional costs. So that's down 327, again, to do to the, mostly to the retirements. The employee mandated benefits, down $105,000, whoops, down $105,000. The special apportionment programs, that's our special education. And pupil personnel area of the budget, that's, it's up. We have a couple of new students we're expecting, $365,000. Pupil transportation contract, up $115,000. Debt service principal and interest, the 421, 724, again, that reflects what I just talked about, the copiers and the laptops, but it's not really an increase. It's just moved from another part of the budget. Central services, facilities, maintenance and operation, we see $360 there, so it doesn't look like much of a change. But there's been a lot of change in operations and maintenance, so we're seeing a huge savings in fuel oil, and we're seeing a huge savings in electricity. So therefore, you know, the change is a lot smaller than it would have been had we not had the energy performance contract and so forth. So that's why there's such a small difference there. Our curriculum development, building administrative support, that would include all of our principals, the resource officers, our security and safety officers that are in each of the buildings, that's down $167,000. We are reducing some of the costs that we're incurring with Bosie's for consultants, so that had a reduction there. And we've also had some change in administration, so that's the result there. Guidance, health services, pupil personnel, psychological services, those are all our clinicians, and speaks for itself, nurses. That's up 119, that's got the clinician included in that change. The instructional media, those are all of our costs associated with lower Hudson Regional Information Center, which is our computer and instructional media. That's down $45,000. Our athletics, down $15,000. And business office, finance, bidding and auditing, we're seeing a small increase of $6,000. Those are regularly contractual increases, either in, you know, you know, just with contracts within the business office, supplies and whatnot. Property and liability insurance, we're seeing an increase of $54,000. And central administration, superintendent district office voting is down $13,000. And human resources, public information and legal services, down $22,000. Again, overall change in the budget-to-budget from this year to last year, $385,000. There is a longer version of this, much longer version, that's about 17 pages. That's available on the table. If anybody wants to go through it, it's more of a line-by-line entire budget that gives, breaks those lines down even further.
And that'll be available online as well?
It's available online. It's on there now, and it's on the website under, I believe it's district, and then budget. It's pretty self-explanatory. So the summary of this year's budget, we have a budget-to-budget change of .75% or $385,000. The budget includes less reliance on fund balance, and it remains, you know, it maintains our current programs and focuses on fiscal responsibility. It's by staying under the tax cap, being tax cap compliant, below the allowable cap of 2.08%. And this year's budget proposes a 1.99% tax increase. The district tax levy has averaged a change of about .67% over the last five years. So over the last five years, we've been significantly under, you know, average under 1%. An average assessed home in Putnam County is $374,000. So based on current assessed values, the rate of change for an average home in Putnam Valley would be $195, or 52 cents on the tax rate change per $1,000 of assessment. The tax cap compliant budget provides an annual refund on resident's school taxes in the form of a tax credit or a tax refund check, depending when you got in on the STAR program. And now there are a multitude of rules for, if you're a new homeowner, if you're an older homeowner, if you're a senior citizen, if you're a first-time homebuyer, you know, there's a lot of different rules now. So, and that check usually arrives sometime in the fall. The STAR value should still be getting deducted on your school tax bill if you've had it before, but if you are a new homeowner, you get that as a credit on your income tax now, I believe. So I just made a note where people can go to look up their tax, you know, go on to the state tax website to get more information. So I think it's important that people remember the assessed values of their individual homes determine the school taxes that you pay. Therefore, school district residents can see a varying level of change in their individual school tax bills. So if you feel that you have questions, you should contact your assessor about your assessment, if that's what you are questioning. And this is also a reminder to apply for STAR and look for tax credits annually that you might be entitled to. There are new requirements for enhanced STAR, and I think seniors are going to have the hardest time, you know, I mean, they have to go on a computer, they have to get on a computer, they have to have access to a computer to get their STAR exemption. They're making it more difficult for people. We certainly will open up our office to anyone who needs help trying to go on to the New York State website to do. We're going to put some more things on our website, too, regarding that when the time gets closer. And then any information on those exemptions can be found at that website. And this is the voting information. The vote is on May 21st, and it's from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at our elementary school as of right now. Voters can obtain absentee ballots for the budget vote and vote on open trustee positions. The voter, there's voter registration nights coming up. Those are posted on the website, www.pvcsd.org. The newsletters are work in progress right now. We're looking at it coming out in April. And as mentioned earlier, there's a line-by-line proposed budget available at our district office, as well as online and here tonight. And obviously, if anyone has any questions, I am available, and that's where I can be reached, and that is my email address. So, does anyone have any questions?
So Jill, on the income side, are we, has the energy performance contract been closed as a project, and we are now eligible in 1920 to get aid on that project?
Yes.
So that's built into this?
The final cost report will be filed by June, and we are having the last bit of work done on that over this summer, but it's going to be started June 26th. It's the windows at the elementary school, and yes, we will be getting aid on it.
Does anybody else have any questions?
The, one question I have, can you explain a little bit more, both to me and to anybody listening? Was it the debt service refi, the debt?
Reserve.
Reserve.
Okay.
That has about a five-year life expectancy. Because I noticed that we're looking at about a million, almost exactly a million dollars less use of reserves.
Right, for this year.
For this year. And, you know, we always like to keep, I like that we're under what's allowable. I'd love it less, but can you talk about what the thinking and why we need to keep spread out that debt reserve as long as we can?
I'd like to see us spread it out as long as possible. I don't think that the budget could afford to use more of it than about $300,000 to $350,000 every year. You know, by reducing our reliance on that, we're building it back into the natural budget, and it doesn't hurt as much as it could if we just all of a sudden had no more left and had to add a million dollars from our budget. We'd have to make a lot of cuts in a lot of places. So, you know, that debt service reserve has come from other years, you know, prior years of remaining appropriations and remaining money from other capital projects that have happened. So that money doesn't build up naturally in any way, other than through a capital project that has funds left over in it or interest earned on it. So that won't revive itself. And the only way we can keep it, you know, working for us is, I feel, is to just reduce it slowly.
And I have one more question, if I recall. Do we see a projection of at least the same number of retirements next year? I believe we've already had a couple of people submit their retirement paper.
The following year, which is 2020-21, we will see three teachers retiring in the fall, actually, with a different date than other, the other staff. But we don't have anyone beyond that.
Okay.
As far as the teaching staff. There's nobody on the support staff either after that. Anyone who's going is going between June 30th and like September 1st this year. It all depends on their start date.
Okay.
So that they get their full amount of seniorities.
Maybe Dr. Wells or Natalie can kind of remind everybody as to the addition of the clinician for the elementary school and middle school, what that's for? The addition of the clinician?
Well, there has been, there's a new regulation from the state regarding the kinds of services that we have to provide for our schools with regard to social-emotional learning. And those involve significant classroom programs, and frankly, the actual needs
And frankly, the actual needs in our schools have, these needs have increased substantially. We are talking about, we talk about trauma-informed schools because we have a number of students with significant home and family issues. We have students who, whose need for clinicians, they're regular every day. Every day we have students who have the need for assistance or service. And with that in mind, we are in the midst of right now, an audit, if you will, or an evaluation of our services to see, by someone, by the way, who was, who was very familiar with the state regulations, who was involved, you know, with the groups, you know, who created these regulations for the state. And this audit included conversations with administrators, with teachers, with, I believe even students. But it's, it was a very comprehensive audit of what we now do. And with that, we, we expect to receive a recommendation with regard to whether we have services that are sufficient and how they could be restructured or whether we do need to have additional service. So in the budget, we do have funding in case that report and the board agrees with that report. If that is the case, that, that we need an additional clinician and what that role would be and what kinds of services we could expect from that. So that's where we are with, with the clinician. I mean, there is an emphasis in the state now on social emotional learning for a reason. It's not just Putnam Valley. It is something that is regional, state, national. It includes the opioid crisis and the results of that crisis, the impact of that crisis on families. There are things that are really not known publicly, but we see them in schools and, and it's a very severe impact. I know that Ms. Russo knows well of it because she is a social worker in another district and knows the kind of influx that we are seeing, have a great intensity. And there's, there are suicide issues in, in schools. There are, and I don't know Natalie, you may want to add to what I've said. I, I think I tried to describe it, but please.
I think you did a great job explaining it. I think we are seeing an uptick in student needs in the area of social emotional wellness. And really, actually, we need to promote wellness and really be more proactive in helping students navigate this new world of social media and having access to all kinds of things that, that we really never have before. So it really is being not just proactive, but providing services that meet the needs of our students. And we're seeing that in an increase in hospitalizations for students in mental health facilities. There's been quite an uptick in that regionally, nationally, as you said. And then also embedding our social emotional learning in our curriculum. And what does that look like and how do we roll that out? And how do we support teachers who are on the front line and, and monitors and assistants? And all of those people who are on the front line working with our students, especially with our youngest students and really getting in there and doing the work earlier. So that by the time you get to middle and high schools, our students aren't struggling as much and, and just have better coping skills to deal with the stressors of today that are so very different from, from any other time we've had.
And Jill, you mentioned just overall students and that was about fourteen hundred?
In this district?
Yes.
No, we have sixteen, about sixteen eighty.
Okay, so that's even better. Because I know when I got on the board, we had about two thousand students district-wide, two thousand to twenty-one hundred. So it's about four hundred, five hundred less. And I, you've heard, I've, I've used the phrase, you've heard me talk about being fiscally responsible. And I've also said, we can't create a private school environment on the backs of our taxpayers. We do have absolutely no commercial tax base. This is one area though, that has grown tremendously, given the numbers.
Agreed.
And it is an area that I think we have to invest in. I'm not entirely convinced, I know what the best clinician is. I'd like to see the audit as well as the plan. But when second graders refuse to go to school because they're anxious, I want to say you shouldn't be anxious at eight.
Agreed.
Wait until you buy your first home and then you can be anxious. But the, the level of mental health issues are happening at a much younger, younger age. So I do think we need some support in that area. Still not convinced what. But I also think on the flip side, it behooves us to really look at other things that have changed in five hundred, in five hundred student change, which is class sizes and some of those other things, so.
And, and the other side of it also is that the population in the school district has changed in terms of needs, other needs that we have developed within our school district that require personnel such as English is a, a new language. There are many areas that have impacted the budget and impacted personnel. You know, what we see in the schools, in, in elementary schools are things that we had never, none, you know, we had really not seen to this degree. Kids who get so frustrated and angry that they throw things down, that they, well, you, you understand what I'm saying. They, they cannot control themselves at all. And so we're asking teachers to manage this. We, we luckily have some wonderful assistance to help. We also have a room in our elementary school that we've made a multi, what they call multi-sensory room. We're trying to keep our students here, we don't want to send them away.
Because that's approximately a six, sixty thousand to a hundred thousand bill per student.
Yeah, so, but we have this multi-sensory room that our OT in our school district has really helped create, where students who are feeling anxiety or feeling that they can't control will go into the room and it has the kinds of softness and a place for them to.
Just have sensory input, mindfulness.
Yes.
Really just a relaxation room almost, regrouping, being able to gather yourself and just learn to use sometimes external strategies bef- obviously before you get to the internal work. But it's, I think it is a great reprieve. And I, I am looking forward to the construction work at the middle school because our, our middle school is so tight that our space, we, we've really struggled to and look for a room that we can create that, you know, model in our middle school. And it, it's a real struggle at this point. We use the OT room at, at times, but if it's being used, we can't use that. So we're looking forward to, and the wellness center at the middle school, you know, really, I think that is the bigger picture is really bringing in these services and places that will service our community in a different way now. Because it is different today.
The focus on strategies is really what we're try, we're trying to give kids the tools to self-regulate. And that's why we started the ruler, getting involved with the ruler program to identify emotions and help them. You know, if we can understand what we're feeling, then we have a better opportunity to, to regulate that.
And our OTs are also looking into bringing in mindfulness practices next year through self, you know, you know, to help students learn how to self-regulate much earlier on. They're looking to, they're applying for some grants to bring in some of these practices and materials for, for our students as well.
And some of these tools are so elegantly simple in a way that, I mean, the last time I heard our OT talk about this, Diane Morgan, she, she gave us, she gave the staff, you know, a very simple elegant little tool of breathing in and breathing out and, and in your mind, you know, saying, I can do this. I love that. When we are stressed, you know, all of us have different things happening, I think about Diane saying that, using that very simple tool. Breathe in, I can do this. And, and we teach this to the students. And it's something basic, something simple that they can have with them forever to help them deal with the stress and anxiety.
Because we don't want to decrease the rigor. Because they are going to hit college and they are going to have the fifty pages of reading a night. So we're going to teach those coping skills. Okay, any other questions for Jill on this first run? I know we're all going to look at your detailed.
Right.
So the clinician dollars are in the line, the, in the guidance health services. That's where the clinician dollars sit, correct?
Right, you're seeing a change there.
A hundred and nineteen increase?
Right, exactly.
The, and then just for clarity, I think you said it already, but in the special apportionment programs, a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase. On that, we're talking about addition of students?
That reflects students, more or less, yes, and contractual changes, yeah.
And my other question on Mandarin. I'm imagining that that's not significant expense to get another section out of Boce's. It's really just a teaching assistant in the room and whatever materials. But it really is just getting another hour out of that teach, that remote teacher, correct?
It's about twenty-five thousand before.
For each section?
For, no, for, to bring it to ninth grade.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be twenty-five per grade. So seventy-five would be the total, what we get aid back on that expense.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're currently surveying about how many students? Twenty-ish?
There's twenty and, if you know, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think there's twenty-one in eighth grade, a similar number.
Yeah, it might be a little less in the seventh.
Seventeen or eighteen in seventh grade. And we haven't done ninth grade signups yet. So it's a question of how many of that twenty-one want to continue into ninth grade? And that will project us forward.
And that affects the cost too, the number.
True.
The number of students. And then there's a base cost, I think it's eleven thousand dollars base cost.
All right, thank you Jill for now.
And there's aid on that too, that we should mention, we get sixty percent back.
The following year, we did the.
For the, for the following year.
And this is only one of many budget presentations?
Yes.
Yes. And we will, before we go into new business, give an opportunity for the public to talk about the budget. But let's now talk about student transportation. Dr. Wells can't contain herself.
No. Well, who is presenting?
It might be the other way.
Dave Spittle and Dr. Loft and I have been, and Jill have, we have been meeting regularly with our transportation provider and there's been quite a bit of dissatisfaction in the community. There have been various issues, there have been concerns about services. And we have been diligent about getting back to parents, about following up on issues. But it has, you know, it has been of concern and we have taken the appropriate measures to both charge back for costs that we've had to incur. And finally, we are in the, at the moment of developing a signed agreement with this company. The company has, that we've been working with, has decided to basically sell its contract to another company, which we call a reassignment of the contract. And originally, we thought that any contract we'd have to enter into would, we would have to incur costs because we were about to, we were about to publish an RFP. And that would have put us in a precarious situation in terms of additional costs that would have been incurred. We wouldn't know what the company was, who would actually have the low bid. There would be a great deal of uncertainty. But instead, to the credit of the company we're working with, we have been able to meet with and come to the initial terms with a company that would take on the same contract at the same costs. And therefore, the, which means that we do have a CPI increase next year. That's part of our, that was part of our three-year deal with this company. This company will start as of April first and take on the, the position of this contract and will continue to finish the contract for next year. Now, of course, you have to ask about the reputation of the company and the depth of the company. Because one of the things you're looking for is a company that has a significant vehicle base, first of all, that they are located regionally, but also have this, this larger company that they can call upon, a large cadre of bus drivers. Because the biggest issue for all of these companies today is finding a bus driver. So finding the bus drivers to man these buses. And so what has happened is we are right now in the process of concluding a, we feel will be a very positive arrangement with a company that is, has local connections and has an excellent reputation. We were able to meet with the people that, you know, one of the things that impressed us so much was that this company said, we want to communicate with the parents of the community. We want to hold meetings, information meetings. We want to be present at fundraisers so that, we want to build a relationship with your community. And so they basically mentioned that they are, in some ways, they are truly subsidizing this contract for this year. The costs that they will have to take over in order to build a relationship with us over the next year and a half. So that when we look at this company, we will feel so positive about them that we will want to work with them to extend. So for us, for Dave and, and Dr. Loft and I, I, I think, and me, and for Jill, who was very concerned about the costs, the increased costs that could occur if we had a, an RFP and had to add significant amounts to the budget. This was for us a, a very important, important contribution to the community. And I feel that we wanted to give our community the confidence that we were looking into this issue. We were working diligently. And I have to, I am very grateful to Jill and to Jeannie Denai as well for keeping a very detailed spreadsheet on every incident, the costs of every incident. And this is what helped us as we pursued the change in this contract. Please, Dave and Dr. Loft, any additions, Jill?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's, it's, it's nice to finally be able to talk about this and that there's been so much work going on behind the scenes. And Mr. Spittle was promised that transportation was just a tiny piece of his facilities job when he took it. We apparently lied to him. But this has been a long time in the works and we appreciate the public's frustration. And we don't believe that we've been getting, receiving the service that we're paying for. But we're obviously under contractual obligations and this is all monitored and controlled by the state. And we really ended up with very limited options. And those options were to continue with the vendor as we, that we have for the remainder of the contract, which we did not see as a feasible solution. Our other choice was to essentially, to end that contract and to go out for an RFP. But comes with its own risks. We were told by a consultant to expect fifteen to twenty percent increases in the RFP costs. We don't know what vendors would respond, so we don't know who we would end up with. And the third option was certainly the pie in the sky option. And that was to take our existing contract, all the terms, as well as the cost of that contract, and have it reassigned to a different company, one that we thought can better meet our needs. And that ended up being where we are today. And, and we hope to be able to approve and move forward with that. So really, as a school district, this was the best case outcome for the situation we've been in. And it took us a long time to get here, but we had to take that time and make all those steps in order to get to where we are today. But I think that during our conversation with this company today, and it will continue to be a conversation with the company moving forward, is the first priority. Be, sorry, the first priority is obviously the safety of our students back and forth. Well, the second priority is to rebuild trust with the community. And they understand that's been broken and they have plans to work really hard to restore that trust in our transportation. And that was something that was very exciting for us to hear.
So they're going to finish out this school year?
This company is, is going to start April first.
April first, and then the contract runs through next school year.
And the counter, okay, great. And then we can look.
And next year.
Just talked about the.
The drivers.
So one of the advantages of this company, because they have such a large footprint in the area, really in the state, is they have access to a much greater number of drivers. Their, their first priority will be to retain any of the drivers that we currently have. And they believe they have a compensation package and they'll be approaching each of those drivers and telling them what they can offer. Obviously, the more drivers we can keep who know our students, who know our routes, who know our roads, the better off we are. But in the case where they, they're, they're short on drivers, they have. But in the case where they, they're, they're short on drivers, they have a large driver base, they have a straw, Wappingers, they actually will be beginning in Peekskill July 1st, so they have a growing footprint of, of drivers that they can pull from and assign here, not to pull one day at a time, but drivers they would permanently assign here, as well as the dispatcher that would be able to, they would always be part, so if they don't know it, this company seemed very serious about safety, about learning the routes, about having consistent drivers, about doing all of the things that we need done, that we're paying for within our service contracts. So, there, we, everyone recognizes the shortage of drivers, which is why the importance of having such a large footprint, such a large reach of drivers to, to pull in, is essential for the success of any of these companies, and that's what led to the failure of our previous companies, they simply didn't have the base locally to provide the drivers they needed.
I envision that one of the orientation pieces of this pie, seeing as April 1st is right around the corner, and then we go into spring break, in that they'll have, you know, 10 days to get things going, and then make adjustments during spring break time to, to really come back and be ready to go.
So today was the first day we met with this company, and, but we think that time is of the essence, which is why we're having this conversation today, we're already scheduled to meet with them again on Monday. On Monday, they're gonna come with a much greater level of detail around what the transition will look like, and all of those conversations could certainly take place during that break, and they've made themselves available for any, in public or even executive session meeting, if, if it's warranted, to come to meet with the board to discuss contractual or any of the other pieces, that they would certainly be willing to make themselves available.
And we did do the research on this company before we met with them today, in other words.
You would never believe how far our reach has gone with the transportation, I know more transportation people than I ever thought I would.
Okay, all right, that does sound like the best of all possible scenario, so that's great.
Very optimistic.
All right, Jill is so excited now, because we get to talk about the district calendar. I don't know why this thrills you every year, Mr. Ferrer.
Because it bothers everybody else.
Do you want me to start, Fran?
Yes.
So Fran was quick to point.
I've given, I've given over the calendar to Dr. Luft. I, I had a calendar recommendation, but Dr. Luft has been looking at it, and since he's starting July 1st, it's his calendar. You know how Sully is driving the plane, you know, and it coming over the, your plane, no, my plane.
I saw it more of a game of hot potato, in which you did not want to win.
It's all yours.
Okay, start talking.
So, what'd you have before you, the four different calendars? The first one is the adopted calendar from BOCES, and there's obviously some, there's some contractual differences we're gonna run into with the BOCES calendar every year, so it's, it's impossible for us to adopt exactly what you see before you. So, as we go through, there's three different options here, I'll explain the differences between the BOCES calendars, our proposed calendar, and then highlight any of the differences, or the reasons behind it. So the first one is a very simple switch, on the BOCES calendar, they have June 26th as a superintendent's conference day. Contractually, we do not have four superintendent's conference days, so we cannot use that day as a conference day. The 26th would become an instructional day, and then to balance our calendar, we would trade the 26th for Wednesday, February 19th, which would be a, a third day in our winter break recess, and that's the closest we could stay to the proposed BOCES calendar, which, that one switch. Going on to draft B, this one has two changes. One change is the 26th becoming an instructional day. The other one is the scheduling of a superintendent's conference day prior to Labor Day. Now, the advantage of these changes are twofold. One, the district has been working with the union and unable to get contractual language to commit to a fourth superintendent's conference day, and if this calendar was adopted, it would allow us to move forward. So I'd ask that we adopted it in draft form, and then we would work with the union to create an SMOA to add that fourth superintendent's conference day to the contractual language. And, so the superintendent's conference day, the other piece is to, when necessary, to have teachers report for conference days prior to Labor Day, which would allow us to start as instructional days immediately following Labor Day. So, in this case, we would trade the 26th and the superintendent's conference day on August 29th for two days added to the winter, I mean, the, the holiday recess, which would give our teachers the two full weeks off of the holiday recess.
And our students.
The third option would be scheduling two superintendent's conference days prior to the opening of school. That's something that's very typical in school districts in her area, that again, would allow us to start instructional days beginning the day following Labor Day, and would also trade that 26th, June 26th conference day for another full day, in this case, all three days, Wednesday, the 19th, Thursday, the 20th, and Friday, the 21st, would be added to the February break, to make a complete February break. What I want to point out in all three options, this is something I know has been different in the past. In the past, the conversation around the February break has been trading days in the spring. And many times, it was the Friday before Memorial Day, the Monday after Easter, and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Those have traditionally been sort of the floating days, do you make them independent standalone days, or do you add them to a holiday? What the state did this year is they extended this school year back three days. So now the school year ends on the 26th, where we would have typically ended three days earlier, and what that did was allowed us the flexibility to do both. So, all three of the draft calendars that I presented do not have any differences in the give-back days. So all still have the Friday before Memorial Day, which would be our first give-back day, if needed, due to snow closures, or wind closures, or temperature closures, or.
Power.
Power closures. April 13th, which is the Monday after Easter, would be the second give-back day, and then we would start to dip into the spring break. So, it would really take us nine days, of missing nine days of school, before we lost a day in our spring break. So I know that's always been something to keep in mind, as we're trying to preserve the spring break, but in all three options, there's no difference in the number and the order in which the give-back days are listed. So it's just a matter of, how close to the BOCES calendar do we want to remain? And are the advantages of getting contractual language to begin before Labor Day, and to add a fourth conference day worth the, being off-sync from BOCES calendar? But we did confirm on days that we are closed and BOCES is open, those students are still provided transportation to those BOCES programs. I don't want it to get out there that, because we're closed, those students are not receiving education. If we're closed, we still provide transportation to those students to get to their programs.
So then, BOCES students get extra days? Because we'll be open on other days when BOCES might be closed, and they will get their classes here.
Correct.
No, there.
The, the tech program on the day that they're here, you mean, when we're closed, right.
We're closed, they get to go there, but if BOCES is closed and we're open, they get, so they get, they get extra. I know, they're so excited.
I know.
So, Dr. Wells, quick clarification, draft A assumes only the three contractual superintendent's conference day.
Correct.
Drafts B and C.
Add a fourth.
Add a fourth, which doesn't substantially change the days.
The flip, the flip is the.
There's an extra instructional day on draft A.
Okay.
We have the 183 versus the 182.
And, and, right, and they all add up to 186 total, and I think the big, the big trade-offs as far as just the calendar itself, it's the extra two days during the, the new year time versus the additional three days or two days for February.
Are we adopting this today?
No.
No, I would just ask that.
We'll get to talk about it again.
We choose a draft, because depending upon which draft it is, I would have to work with the union to, to sign an SMOA, to agree to those terms, and then we can approve it.
So then essentially, we can go under, if we were to want to go with the draft B or C, if we were unable to secure agreement, we would have a fallback.
Right, but, I mean, we spoke to the union, the union, this has all obviously been discussed with the union, so they're on board and ready to move forward, depending upon what's decided here tonight.
And do we find that two days before the start of school would be a significant benefit? I'm imagining it would.
What we run into for the opening of school every year is, we simply do not have time, enough time, to do all of the things that we want to do, to get our teachers back excited, explain our goals for the year, provide time for them to work together, as well as the setting up their classrooms and preparing for students. It's, it's always a struggle how to schedule that day, we schedule every minute of it and always run out of time. So there would be a huge benefit of having two days prior to the opening of schools to do all of those things we want to do, to prepare our students for the arrival, prepare our teachers for the arrival of students.
I'll just, I'll just put the target on my chest here, by, because, thank you for explaining those. I, one thing I do like is the addition of another conference day, because I know in the past, Dr. Luft and others have mentioned some ideas about trying to get more conference days, faculty days, et cetera, and, so that's a nice, that would be a nice addition, and a nice, nice place to get it also, with two consecutive days, I think. It's, it becomes more worthwhile. And I'll just throw out that, the other thing about the February break that I just always felt as an old retired teacher was, there was a certain renewal that went on when you had that February break. It was, it was just a sense of renewal when, when that occurred, and sort of a, a re-energy, re-energizing that, that I felt. So I'm just speaking from the gut for that. So I like those two, two parts of draft C that I noticed there, and from different perspectives. And I do, I do think, my, my, my guess is that two back-to-back superintendent's conference, conference days, as opposed to one before the Memorial Day, I mean, the Labor Day weekend, and one after, splitting that up and having that time in between, I think that you kind of stall what you initially started. So, I mean, I don't know if that is, if, you can do option B1, right, which could be the same thing instead of, you could put, you could do the back-to-back in August, and have the two full weeks in December, as opposed to the, the time in February. But I, even though I'm loathe to admit the, that I, I can't stand the February break, I do think that it's very likely, and I'm not a weather forecaster at all, but someday during that week, we're gonna, if we were to have classes, they'd be a snow day anyway. But I, in, in looking at the calendar, March, it's a long distance from February 18th to April 6th. It's a, it's a long stretch with only a superintendent's conference day in there. So I too, I, I would kind of go along with my, my lovely associate here next to me with draft C. Yes, you're my lovely associate. And I do think, I think two weeks for December, January, while on paper, that looks great, but at the same time, I, I am, and there's gonna be more information, I've asked for information on attendance on those days where we have half weeks, like in Thanksgiving and Christmas, and when we get that on, I think probably elementary school, the middle school, numbers are probably more representative of where the challenges are for attendance. I think that will be probably a little more evidence, because right now, we have information on high school, but I think where parents take students out of school would be in the elementary school more than anywhere else. So looking at that, we'll probably, if there's a significant difference, I might change my mind, but right now, I, I do agree that. I like the C.
For the record, there wasn't a, a big change at the high school.
Right.
Yeah, it was almost.
And I wouldn't imagine there, there would be, because the, you know, there's that sense of every day's important.
Yeah.
Not that it's not in the other schools, but as far as parents perception.
Dr. Luft, I'm, I think I lost, in draft A has three days in February, but not the two weeks of Christmas. How did that extra, where did that extra day come?
So, the only difference between our draft A and the adopted BOCES calendar is swapping the June 26th conference day that BOCES has for the 19th of February.
Anybody else have any? I mean, I know, this year, if you walked around in Westchester, Putnam, or Rockland County, I don't think you could find three schools that had the same calendar. I saw that just in the last February break, so I think we have to do what makes the most sense for our students and our kids, so I'm gonna defer.
And I know, we, we've been collecting calendars from around the region, and I think even the BOCES consortium districts are split 50/50, I think nine of the 18 are trying to follow the BOCES, nine have their own. But the other thing to consider is, BOCES has different contractual language than we have, right? BOCES, I don't think they can start before Labor Day, and it's in their contract, so if they could, they may have adopted our calendar, right? They may have adopted C, but if they don't have that flexibility within their contract, it's not an option for them. They have a fourth conference day, they make it on the 26th, again, that's a different option that they have contractually than we have. So, I understand, we try to meet their calendars, in this case, one day is guaranteed to be different, so it's really two days that we're talking about, between any of the three options, and it's based upon what we think is best, and I don't necessarily think it's a disservice to the students who attend BOCES for those two days. If we were weeks apart, it'd be a different story, like if we were proposing a different spring break week than they had, then we'd be talking about something really drastic, and I would never endorse that.
The only thing with, with this draft C is our students come back the day after Labor Day. The other drafts, they come back.
The day after, the day after.
The Wednesday, that's just, okay.
All right, and I just want to note that the conference days are actually Wednesday, Thursday, so it still gives teachers a long, a four-day weekend for Labor Day, for those who want to travel. And that, again, is very consistent around the area for schools that are doing the conference days before Labor Day.
And I can tell, one year, we did have four days, we started the Tuesday after Labor Day. And having four days right there at the beginning was really nice, in terms of getting started in a classroom. Three days was harder, so.
Especially when you start, you know, following up not too long, having these broken-up weeks because of all the holidays in October.
Though, they're, they're later, this year, we were hit in September with.
Right, and I was gonna point that out, by having contractual language that allows this flexibility, although this year, September is not bad, there are other years where every week is interrupted.
Right.
So also having a further interrupted beginning of school.
But you don't get a full week until October, middle of October.
This year, Rosh Hashanah was the first week after Labor Day, so you went from Labor Day.
Right, right.
Okay, so I'm, I, I, I'm deferring, I, my child is nine years out of the school district, and, you know, I'm deferring to the, the people that have to ma, monitor all this, so do my hearing from the other board members that we're leaning towards draft C?
That's where I was going.
Okay. Take it away, Dr. Luft.
So, so I'll get the necessary documentation and, and resolution for, between now and the meeting on the 21st, and then hopefully on the meeting 21st, we can accept SMOA, and then adopt the budget. I mean, not the budget, the calendar on that.
That's Jill's job.
And it won't be adopted on the 21st.
Okay, okay. All right, since you're talking, we've had our student report, do you have a curriculum report for us?
I just wanted to quickly touch base on some of the topics, oh wait, do you want to do comments for the presentations?
No.
I usually do that right before new business, so you might say.
So we held a superintendent's listening hours before, listening hour, before the board meeting tonight, and I just wanted to touch on some of the topics that came up, and we had a. had a, a small group of community members attend, as well as some district employees. So one of the topics that we discussed was IB, the need for additional handouts, presentations, maybe an FAQ document. We talked about possibly offering small groups of 10th grade parents opportunities to talk to guidance counselors, information sessions, so on and so forth. So I've already been in conversation with Dr. Cherry from our high school, and she's very excited to provide all of the following, so stay tuned for more information. We did recently receive our authorization, which was sort of a piece we were waiting for, before we started going out with the PR piece, but now I think we're primed for that. So far, all of these presentations and stuff have been dedicated to those parents most directly affected by this change, and now it's time to start sort of, first of all, I'd say celebrate. I think it's a tremendous accomplishment for our high school faculty to be authorized, to offer IBA, and I think it's a great way for us to share information and celebrate our successes. So that will certainly be spread to a wider audience across the district, so parents have a sense of what IB is, what it means for our students, what are the advantages of it are, and so on.
And guidance counselors are already talking to, I know at least the sophomores as far as class selections.
Correct, so we've been working sort of our most pressing need down, but we were getting parents or middle, questions from middle school parents and, who have not yet been exposed to it. So now's our opportunity to, to reach wide and let everyone get a sense of what it means. We talked a little bit about instructional technology and the role it plays within our classrooms. We do a tremendous job of pulling students out for specials or encores, or the high school giving them options for electives and instructional technology. We talked about ways to improve the meaningful use of technology within the classroom as well. We talked a little bit about initiatives, and if the new superintendent had any initiatives he planned on bringing in.
He'll let us know.
He'll let you know. So we spoke a little bit about, the focus was really to, we have a lot of initiatives going on here right now, and a lot of them still have room to grow, and I think that our first priority is to continue to grow all the amazing things that are happening here in the district. At the same time, we're looking to begin something of a strategic planning process in which we'll be asking faculty members, as well as community members and students to identify their core values, and to be able to collate through all of that information and essentially build what we think are, are collective core values as a school district, and that would be a great foundation for strategic planning of the future and an opportunity for us to align all of our professional development, align our board goals, align everything we do to what we believe in. So that work's gonna begin as soon as next Friday during our superintendent's conference day, and will continue throughout the spring, and we would allow those core values to drive any potential new initiatives. Opportunities to communicate with parents was discussed about. Some shared receiving ask-about documents from their teachers, so as a parent of a seven and 10-year-old who do nothing at school all day, according to them, that I, I echo the need for that type of information. I think some teachers do a great job of it. I think discussing best practices and coming up with sort of common expectations for teachers is a great way to close the gap. As the parent explained, it's really about providing me information so I can support what's going on in the classroom. And the more I know about what my child's doing in the classroom, the more of an asset I can be to that teacher in supporting those skills, and I think there's lots of ways we can do that. We talked about ask-about documents, websites, bullets, unit guides, and this work looks different across grade levels, but it's conversations that are happening across all three buildings, and I think it's something that we'll continue to work on moving forward. We spoke a little bit about science research, and a community member had offered the possibility of providing some of our science research students with mentors, which is very exciting. Then we had a lengthy conversation about the fiscal stress felt by schools, specifically the gap between expense, expenses and revenue, and that there's a groups beginning or forming that's gonna explore options to advocate at both the local and state level, to explore ways to increase revenue and offset what in, like in many cases, is, is a modest increase in expenses, but without see, without any increase in our revenue, that always falls on the burden of the taxpayers, as well as our, as, as Jill discussed earlier, is our reserves. And there's only so much the community can take, and there's only so much that the reserves can offset, and it's a scary day, it'll be a scary day, when the reserves are gone, and we'll have no choice but to ask for a supermajority. And without drastic changes, it's not a Putnam Valley issue, it's a statewide issue, because it's gonna happen to all districts if something doesn't change in the formula for how revenue is determined in terms of state aid and foundation aid from the state. I think that was it. Thank you.
You know, and as a corollary to that, I know probably right before the tax cap got put in place, Sandy Galiff, Galiff was among a number of legislators that had a number of different proposals that were put up in front of the assembly to look at different ways to fund education, and I think then the tax cap came in, and they kind of put that to the side, and it never, they'd never resurrected that, that effort, or at least I hadn't heard of them resurrecting that effort, but Sandy Galiff was on the front lines of trying to, to examine that, along with others, and there were two or three different competing plans that were going on at the same time, because that, that's always the case.
And then it's been quiet.
And it's been quiet, but not so much.
So I was in Albany earlier this week with superintendents from across the state, and this is their public advocacy, advocacy, their, their lobby day, where they go and they meet with state assembly people, and this was certainly, there was many issues they discussed, but this was certainly the most pressing issue, as the governor is pushing for the 2% cap to become law and, and not to expire, the, still little attention is paid to the revenue side of this and foundation aid that's not still fully funded, and we're not in great shape, but there's certainly districts that are in much, much worse shape in terms of foundation aid, and I guess the dirty little secret is, some districts are overfunded, but there's very little conversation about those districts as well. So it's, it's a very complex piece that's going on at the state level, and certainly educators and superintendents from around the state are doing what they can to advocate for it, and I think this group that's starting locally is, has its eyes both on, on what we can do locally, as well as what we can do to influence the state politics to, to correct some of these funding issues, so it's not stuck falling on the, on the taxpayers all the time.
Talking to you, Long Island.
Fighting words. I've asked Dr. Willis if I can rearrange the order one more time, because I see someone who may be here from the PTA, PTSA, who has to be here very early tomorrow morning, so do we have any report from the PTA, PTSA?
Be hilarious if you just said no.
That's fine. She could say no. You're never, never penalized for being considerate.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Christina Casey. I'm the corresponding secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. We had our second annual pocketbook bingo fundraiser on February 23rd. It was another hit with a great turnout. Thank you to all of our community donors who generously contributed goods and services to be raffled at our event. Congratulations to all the winners. Tomorrow, Friday, March 8th, is our annual special persons Dr. Seuss reading spectacular at 6:30 in the elementary auditorium. This is a free event for all of our Putnam Valley families. Join us in our celebration of reading. There will be crafts, light refreshments, and lots of reading. If you're interested in volunteering for this event, please email us. The PTA is sponsoring a spelling bee for our third and fourth graders. Students interested in participating should sign up with their teacher. Some important dates include a parent meeting on March 12th, a student orientation on March 26th, which is when the students will receive their list of words to study, April 25th will be the semifinals, and May 13th is the finals. On Thursday, March 14th at 6:30, we will be having a PTA general meeting with our guest speaker, Ms. Mastrata, our elementary school assistant principal. The topic will be, "It Takes the Village Keeping Our Children Safe." We're also creating a staff cookbook fundraiser, and we're looking for elementary and middle school staff members to submit their favorite recipes. If you're interested in contributing a recipe, please email Michelle at C-H-E-L-L-E-R-I-L-E-Y at hotmail.com, and Teresa at T-R-E-E-S-S-999 at gmail.com. And more information to follow on how to purchase a cookbook. We're running our Three For Me program at the elementary school on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9:15 till 11:00 a.m., but you can also attend at other times, just let us know ahead of time. Three For Me encourages our members to volunteer three hours of their time over the course of the year to support our elementary school teachers with tasks such as copying and assembling projects. Coffee and snacks are provided for all of our volunteers. To volunteer for any of the events mentioned tonight, or to volunteer for upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org, or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org, and like our Facebook page for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Willis?
There's some wonderful events coming up for the PTA. It's terrific to hear about the reading events and all good things for our parents and, and kids. I just wanted to add a little bit to what Sonia talked about with regard to the states. We had also a gymnast from our school district who performed with awards at the state, that's Caitlin Pellegrino. We have a show coming up at the elementary school. I saw the practice today, Wizard Bars, which is very exciting. We have the, I, I think it was also mentioned by Sonia, but I want to again reiterate that our high school Science Honor Society students come over to the elementary school to work on the science fair with the students. I think that's one of the great kinds of connections that are, that are fostered in, in the school district between groups of students. Our superintendent's conference day is coming up next Friday, and it's a, we're having a little different kind of an experience, because we have a, a severe water main issue at this campus where we're losing water, and we need a three-day period in order to locate the, we think we know where the leak is, but in order to get the equipment we need, should we need any equipment, we have to work on Thursday night to excavate, Friday to do the work, to see if we can find the leak, and then get the equipment that day, because on the weekends you can't get the equipment to fix the leak. So we, Dave has set up the excavator coming in at 3 o'clock on Thursday. And on Friday, we have our superintendent's conference day, but we will hold it at the elementary school. So this is a little different for everyone gathering there, and we set up a very, we think a very interesting day, including some opportunity for starting the strategic planning, thinking about that. We're going to talk about how our teachers deal with students who are coming into the district with, with differences that are, that we want to pay attention to, kids who, get more kids of color coming into our district, more kids with, with language needs coming into our district, and how do we ensure that we have positive relationships among the students. We hear a lot about some very hateful language and hostile experiences nationally, regionally, and we want to maintain the best kind of respectful environment so that our students feel comfortable here and feel accepted and welcomed. And so we have a program that will work on, on that issue. We have a program on universal design, which is a way of developing lessons that ensure inclusiveness, you know, lessons that deal with students of all abilities, and Natalie has done great work in getting someone to work on that, and we also have some day, some time for curriculum and for some work with middle school teachers and the principal, looking at the schedule, the current schedule, and seeing if there are ways, you know, what is working, what the kinds of things need to be improved. So it's a little different day because we'll, we're, we're finding parking, you know, that will be a challenge, but we're moving the buses to the town park, and so we think that will ultimately work very well. I was able to attend the Beyond Neverland, the shadow play over at the fourth grade, Mr. Spurling's class. It was a wonderful review of the history of Alice in Wonderland and some of the little-known facts. What's wonderful about the shadow play is because of that technique, students who might feel uncomfortable acting or, you know, expressing themselves, because it's a shadow play there behind the screen, and it gives them some wonderful expressiveness, and you can see how that works for the students with that technique. We also, it looks like that we're going to be, it looks like we're going to be partnering with the library again, with the Community Read, and a committee has been formed to choose a book, so that we can continue that process that we started last year, and that committee is, that is represented by student, by community members, and our library media specialist here, Fran, Mary Fran DeMann will also be involved. I also want to mention that one of our students was mentioned, and, well, she wasn't mentioned, but her troop was mentioned. This is the new BSA, the new Scouts BSA that now invites young women to participate, and one of our students, Asiya Amin, received the, the first medal in the United States for her, an emblem of her knowledge of her religion, which is Islam. The activity for the celebration of Asiya Amin's accomplishment took place at the Islamic Center here, Hudson Valley Islamic Center. I know that Mr. Smith represented the board at that celebration, and.
Wonderful.
It was, it was a wonderful experience, and as I said, there was a New York Times article which talked about this troop, 164, which is, is groundbreaking with the new Scouts BSA.
Okay.
We want to congratulate Asiya Amin.
So now I'd like to open it up on public contribution on listed agenda items. Doesn't have to be, but please do.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Smith. I'm a new, well, not no, totally new, four-and-a-half-year resident of Putnam Valley, and I came to an earlier listening session back, I believe it was February, and the point of this contribution conversation right now is I'm very interested in forming a working group that would take a look at helping to develop a long-looking plan for a sustainable tax base. Now I understand from, and this was a perfect evening to have attended, because getting a chance to see the school budget discussed helped really get points clear to me and understand how big the problem is and how big the cost structure is. And I also know that this isn't a simple thing. It's, it's been brought up to me, is that there's been several attempts before. So what I want to request of the board is for them to seriously consider my offer of volunteering my time to try to put together a comprehensive working group that is look and tasked with coming up with solutions, that we can take a significant chunk of the tax base and look for alternate ways that we fund it. Now this would mean, we need to meet with our state legislators. I need to get some really good schooling and history of what has been attempted, what the state of New York logistically is like in trying to look for these opportunities, because I think we have a unique problem. We have a basically, a rural community with a very low business potential income. There's a propensity in the community to not facilitate growing a business base, I understand that. So it means this group would have to really take a look at the problem and engage with the state legislators and other school communities to find a solution. So I'm basically proposing for the board to consider this. I would offer my time, I would encourage, as, you know, this would be a working group, so it, this, more than just me. And so volunteers should join this, other people you might suggest. We can set up further discussions, so I just wanted to introduce myself this evening. My name is Stephen Smith, I live here in Spruce Mountain Drive, and would like to take on this task, because I want to be able to stay here to retire. I've met a lot of my local neighbors, and they tell me flat out, you can't stay here. Once you're no longer working, this isn't a community you can stay in, because the costs are so high. And so that's my contribution for this evening. I'd like you to seriously consider my offer and see if I can help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other business? So any other comments is what I meant to say, and now going on to new business. Ms. Furrow, start us off with number one.
Be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes the board president to sign a stipulation of settlement regarding SED case number 33, oh, I'm sorry, 33,0797, as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said document shall be incorporated.
As presented to the board at this meeting, a copy of said document shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting as document number 13819. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the provisional appointment of Megan Smith Hyzen as athletic trainer to a probationary appointment as athletic trainer effective March 8th, 2019, subject to the satisfactory completion of a probationary term of not less than a minimum of eight weeks, that's May 3rd, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, that's March 6th, 2020, probationary period.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Ryan Bender to a probationary appointment as mechanic bus driver effective April 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, that would be May 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, which would be March 30th, 2020, at the Transportation Department on Step 10 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Be it resolved that the board hereby accepts the letter of resignation of Bruce Ludovici, a tenured science teacher dated February 22nd, 2019, and effective upon the close of business on July 15th, 2020, as presented to the board at this meeting as document 139/19.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Dorothy France from her position as an ENL teacher effective the close of the 2018-19 school year as per document number 14019 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Welcome back to the classroom. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to enter in an assignment transfer agreement for the district's student transportation, referenced in the minutes of this meeting as document 141/19 attached to the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
And we'll still see what the actual agreement is, this is kind of the preliminary agreement?
Yeah, remember, there's no changes to the actual contract, so nothing language-wise changes. It would just be the official paperwork of one company signing over to the other, and that we can all make available.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 4 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're appointing spring coaches for JV baseball, modified baseball, JV softball, and modified track and field, and they'll be getting two coaches. We're appointing two spring season volunteers, Mr. Baker for varsity golf, and Dan Turner for modified baseball, and we're approving a leave without pay for a teacher who is having a cesarean c-section.
That was a short one for you, Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to public contribution for, on any topic.
Can I, the suggestion by Mr. Smith, does that mean the board has to form a committee?
Well, I think what we have to find, we have, I want to look at what the mechanism is, like I know board committees usually have to, there's certain prescribed permitted board committees that you can have, I want to look up what all of those rules are.
Okay.
And then decide whether we want it as a board committee, or as simply a work, community committee, where there may be some teachers on it. I think it's a great idea, and I just want to find, we have to kind of do a little work about what the research is.
I just think it's important to mention that it's not necessarily a school-specific committee, and that I know Mr. Smith's intentions are to reach out to the town board members and other people of power in the area who can help influence this change, so it's not that it's specific to schools, but it's more wider conversation around taxes, which is a statewide, local, and school issue.
And we are very prescriptive about what we're allowed or not to do, so I want to look at that. I think we can have a committee, we just have to figure out what it looks like. So, thank you, and I'm sorry we made you stand there so long after inviting you at the public contribution, then we ignored you.
Less intimidating than being in the cafeteria. My name is Dorothy France, you just mentioned me a little while ago as resigning from the ENL teaching position, and I just wanted to take a minute, I promise it'll only be a minute, I've certainly taken up enough of your time with this, but I wanted to clarify, because when I took a leave of absence three years ago from my kindergarten classroom position, I was approached by people in the community, by coworkers, asking what was happening, oh my goodness, and I just wanted to clarify that my resignation from the ENL tenure line is in no way resigning from being an ENL, what's the word?
Supporter.
Supporter, or I want to say, not philanthropist, but like
Advocate.
Advocate, but somebody who loves it, like you go to the ballet and you
An enthusiast.
A fictionato.
That's it, see, it's linguistics, I can't find the word, English or Spanish or whatever, but I just wanted to clarify that, and to thank you all for the opportunity that I had to learn ENL within the Putnam Valley Central School District. It's been a fantastic opportunity, I've had such, I've established such wonderful relationships with multilingual families, and with my colleagues across the elementary school and across the district, and I wouldn't want to leave that in any way, and that learning has been so valuable for me. It's also been a really interesting filter for me to look at the curriculum that we have at the elementary school especially, in terms of linguistics, and I thank you for that opportunity. I look forward to the opportunity to grow our ENL staff and to be a part of the ENL department in the future from my vantage point in a classroom. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being there during the growth of our ENL, I think almost tripled in those three years, so. Anything else from the board?
I wanted to just, I guess a PSA, the Education Foundation is having their Auction and Apps Event at the Winery at St. George on Sunday, March 31st at 3:00 p.m. Check out the website at P V E F N Y dot org for more information.
Okay. Sorry, my computer's in my car, which is at my mechanic's, so. I'd like now to find the right page, and I'd like resolved to convene an executive session for one matter of proposed litigation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.